All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Davie County Commissioners Meeting of December 6, 2021, to order. At this time, I would ask Commissioner Jones to lead us in the invocation.
Let's pray. Father, we come here tonight, Lord, in awe of your mercy, your grace, and your goodness. Father, during this splendorous time of the year when we celebrate the birth of Christ, may we also remember those that are less fortunate than we are, and may we truly take into our heart, the heart of a servant, a heart that says, "Father, it is truly better to give than to receive." Lord, give us wisdom, give us discernment tonight to do the business of this great county that you have sovereignly placed us in. As always, we thank you for men and women who have served and still serve on battlefields that we might be free. We thank you for men and women that serve in our law enforcement, our fire, our EMS, and our schools, that our streets should be safe and our children would be well-educated. And, Lord, again, we thank you for your kindness and goodness having placed us in this greatest of all counties, in this freest of all nations. So, Lord, tonight, we come here even in the business of this county to give you praise, glory, and honor, and to celebrate your birth, and we pray this prayer in Christ's name. Amen.
We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Appreciate everyone coming out this evening. This time, we will go to our Ethics and Conflicts Disclosure, and I'll call on Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-86 and the Davie County Board of Commissioners' Code of Ethics adopted December 2, 2019, I ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda tonight, if there's any potential, actual, or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda, which come before the board from a vote tonight. If so, please speak up and let the board know at this time before the agenda is adopted. Seeing no one speak up, Mr. Chair, I would conclude there's no actual, potential, or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member.
Okay, thank you. All right, next we move to the election of officers for the next year, so at this time I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Vogler.
Thank you. Per Robert Schules' Orders, Chapter 15, Section 47, as the invited temporary president, residing officer of the Davie County Board of County Commissioners, I hereby declare the next order of business, this Honorable Board, to be the election of Chair and Vice-Chair to serve for the ensuing year. We'll first elect the Chair and then the Vice-Chair in that order. We'll need nominations in a second for each position. If more than one person is nominated and seconded, we'll have the board vote on each individual in the order of their nomination. The first person to obtain the majority of the possible roles will be declared the Chair or Vice-Chair. I would now open the floor up for nominations for the positions Chair. Do we have any nominations for Chair?
Mr. Vogler, I would nominate James Blakely to be the Chair for the coming year.
Do we have a second to that?
I'll second that.
Do we have any other nominations for positions Chair?
I nominate Mark Jones.
Do we have a second to that?
I will second it.
Okay. So, we will take it in order of the persons that were first nominated, and then the person who has a majority vote will be declared the Chair. So, at this point in time, I will now call for a vote on the nominations. First of all, for James Blakely, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed. So, we have a majority on the first vote, so we would declare James Blakely as Chair. I would now, after having declared him Chair, I will now open the floor up for nomination position of Vice-Chair. Do we have any nominations for Vice-Chair?
This Chair, I nominate Benita Finney for Vice-Chair.
I'll second.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Got a second on that? Do we have any other nominations?
Yes, Mr. Vogler, I would recommend Terry Renninger.
Is that...
Nominate him as Vice-Chair for the coming year.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, we will take it in order of the nominations. First of all, I would ask for a vote on the nomination for Benita Finney as Vice-Chair. All in favor, raise your hand. Next, I would ask for a vote on Terry Renninger. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed. So, we have, in this particular race, we have Terry Renninger getting three of the five votes, and I would declare him to be the winner of that nomination, and declare him the Vice-Chair. I'll now declare the Chair and Vice-Chair closed, and we'll turn the meeting over to the new Chair, James Blakely, for the adoption of the agenda and off of the business.
You want the squeaky chair now?
Doesn't matter. You're the Chair.
I want out of this chair.
Squeak so bad.
That is the way to start your chairmanship. Be assertive.
Okay, thank you. So, next we'll look to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as laid?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor of adopting the agenda? Five oh. All right. Next, we'll go to public comment period. Mr. Vogler.
And, Miss Chair, we do not have anyone who's signed up for a public comment tonight, so we can forego that.
Okay. All right. Next order of business is we'll go to our Tax Administrator Appointment. I'll go to Mr. Vogler.
Miss Chairman, what you have Commissioners before you tonight is a resolution to appoint Mr. Jamin Gaddy as the Tax Administrator for Davie County. Mr. Gaddy is with us here tonight. Mr. Gaddy is currently the Real Estate Tax Supervisor for Durham County. He's been in that role since January of 2018. Previously, he was a tax appraiser in Davidson County, and he lives in Davidson County. Mr. Gaddy is a veteran, having served in the U.S. Army. He has a bachelor's degree in Business Administration from Catawba College. Commissioners, I present to you Mr. Jamin Gaddy.
Good evening. Just want to say real quick, I think I did my time. I had a chance to meet the staff a couple hours ago, and I'm really excited and really looking forward to just spending time there and getting to know and make things better. Again, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next order of biz.
And, Miss Chair, you have a resolution that you'll need to vote on now.
Need to vote on. All right. All right. So, we've got a resolution before us to accept Mr. Gaddy as the Tax Administrator position. Any discussion? All in favor, vote.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
To...
Okay.
To hire him as Tax Administrator.
Be appointed.
All right, I got a motion.
Appoint.
Be appointed. Okay, so we don't need a second then? Correct.
I'll second the appointment.
All right. Okay. All in favor of the appointment? I vote. Okay. Good now, Ben? We're good now?
Yeah.
Okay, next we'll move to the presentations. The first one, we have a community engagement in Davie County for the Fountain Works.
Thank you for this opportunity for us to have Fountain Works with us tonight to give you some feedback from the procedures that we've gone through in trying to engage the community. You know, we started out about a year ago talking about how do we engage the community, and we wanted to do, we wanted to do a survey, a citizen survey. We talked to some other counties and towns, and they said, "You know, you're not ready for that. You really need to get out and talk to your citizens first, and then try to do a survey in the next year following up." So, that's what we did, and we went for the best. So, we have Julie Brenman and Mason Shambry with us tonight from Fountain Works. They're out of Durham, and I'm going to try to find...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Julie Brenman and have Mason Shambry here with me, and we're really happy to be with you this evening to share the results of the citizen engagement efforts that we had. So, you've received a report. I'll just highlight briefly through the presentation, the purpose and the process. We had a community conversation session, we had several focus groups, and then share with you the themes and recommendations and feedback for all of you. So, as Cindy said, the purpose was for the county to get input from residents and other stakeholders on the services that you receive, the services that you deliver to the public. In particular, we were focused on, you have your strategic plan, and you have goals under your strategic plan, and wanted to hear from the residents, do their interests match up with your priorities that you've laid out in your strategic plan, as well as in the budgeting process, which is how you execute your strategic plan. So, we had some small focus groups in a virtual environment, as well as an in-person session with folks. We collected the data, synthesized it, and reported it back to county leadership, and they asked us to come and give you a presentation today, so you could hear directly from us as well. So, the community conversation was held at the Senior Center on September 27. It was in-person, and it allowed people to engage directly with each other. They were seated at small tables and were able to interact and have discussions. The focus groups were virtual during early October, and we had five different groups targeted on different sort of demographics for the focus groups. The staff was really amazing in recruiting folks for the, both the in-person and the virtual sessions, and the attendance exceeded our expectations and our goals. So, there were 57 people that attended the focus groups, 46 that were at the community conversation, so overall 103 people. We intentionally wanted to have small group conversations and focus group conversations so that we could really hear more of why people think things rather than just what they think. So, an example I'll use from a different community, not Davie County, is sometimes your citizens might say, "We don't feel safe." And if you get that as a survey result, it leaves you up to interpreting, what does that mean? Does that mean they want more police and sheriff? Does it mean they want after-school activities for youth? Does it mean they want more lighting? What does "we don't feel safe" mean? So, the purpose of having these more in-depth conversations with smaller groups is to understand better why people feel the way they do, not just what they feel. So, at the community conversation, it was two hours. It was in-person. You can see here, we asked people as they came in to put a dot on the map of where they lived, to show a general representation that they were from throughout the county. Naturally, there are more dots centered where more of the population is, but there were folks from throughout the county that did attend. We asked a number of questions. Some of it was quick responses and polling questions, and then a lot of it was group discussions, and through that, we asked folks to prioritize things. Wanted to highlight, we have done the same kind of process in other communities in the state, and you should be very pleased that you have very positive feedback from your residents. In the general categories that we asked folks about, quality of life, safe and healthy community, growth and infrastructure, and envisioning the future, over 80% in all of those different categories said that the county is meeting or exceeding expectations. There was one category that we asked about at the staff's request, and that was community awareness. How aware or how informed do you feel about what the county is doing? That only had 39% positive. So, that to us tells us that's a big area for the county to work on, and it's a challenge in the environment we live in where there's not a whole lot of newspapers, people kind of pay attention to their own circles, so how do you get the word out? We used that as one of the conversation points in the focus groups, which happened after, because it was such a divergent response, where there was so much positivity about most of what the county is doing, and then there was less positivity about how aware people are of what the county does. So, the focus groups, as I mentioned, were broken out into five groups. One was targeted for parents of young or school-aged children. One, we called the Bridging Generations, and that was seniors and young adults attended that. One was underserved voices, and really trying to reach out to people that normally don't come to meetings, that don't have a lot of access to services but need support from the county. There was a group of community leaders, so different representatives from other institutions or organizations in the counties, and then a group of merchants and business leaders. We did see a lot of similarities across the different groups, so even though we broke them up to see if there were many differences from the different groups, there were similarities. Across all groups, some of the biggest things we heard was that there's a lack of resources for individuals with disabilities or mental illness. That was one of the top priorities for folks. Lack of affordable housing options for a wide variety of populations came up as a priority. And in education, it was frequently commented that the teacher supplement here is not competitive with your neighboring larger counties, and so it's hard to attract and retain teachers in Davie County when you're so close to others that are giving larger supplements. And then finally, there was tremendous name recognition and praise for Ignite Davie and cognition, which, for us as outsiders, the amount of name recognition, everyone saying Ignite Davie is great, cognition is great, was really, for us, surprising, but for you all, it's hopefully just a good thing that some of this work that you've been doing is really recognized and appreciated. So, we used your strategic plan. I'm not expecting you to be able to read all that's on the screen, but hopefully you're familiar with this, because this is, these are your goals. We use the structure of the strategic plan for the discussions with the focus groups in particular, but also with the community conversation. I just want to point out that we focused on all but the middle one, the business operations. We did ask folks about that, but people didn't have much to say. We supplemented that with questions about awareness of the work that the county does. So, I'm going to ask Mason to run through some of the highlights that we heard across the different four categories.
Thank you, Julie. Yeah, thank you. So, I will touch on the highlights that we've received across all of those areas around these resident themes, starting with safety in other communities. Like we said, there was a lot of positive things that came out. This wasn't all negative. A lot of it verged on positivity, and one of those things is people feel this is a safe community to live in. There are low crime rates. People are happy with that. But there were also some things that they felt could be made better in this category, and that's increasing support and funding and resources towards mental health and mental illnesses, increasing support, funding, and resources for persons with disabilities, and increasing healthy, nutritious, and fresh fruit and fresh foods in the community or schools, lack of easy access to, you know, fruits and vegetables, whether that be at a grocery store or just, you know, in the cafeteria at school. And the next category focused on growth and infrastructure, and we received a lot of diverse feedback on this, but some of it, you know, kind of all ties together when you're talking about this. One of the big things that came through with all or most of the groups was preserving the rural agricultural feel and nature of the county. A lot of people loved the rural aspect of Davie County, how it feels, what it's like to live here, that aspect, and so there was a lot of concern on, you know, if there's tremendous development and growth, that there's going to lose that feel, and so that was a big concern people had. Another is that as Davie County is growing, there is a lack of affordable housing options available to a wide variety of people and populations, and there was just concern that as it continued to grow, there may be less and less available. Another option or another item that we heard a lot about was lack of assisted transportation options in this, cover people who maybe have a disability and have trouble getting around the county, some senior citizens who also may have trouble getting around the county and just need a little assistance going to and from places, or people maybe with mental health issues or illnesses who need, you know, transportation, getting to the services they need. And so, it was just concern about being able to get around the county to access the services that are being provided currently. Another issue that was brought up was the support for mixed-use developments, and so that's just, you know, as you're building up a community, including things that people need, so housing would also be near other services that would need to be provided, and trying to make sure those are all kind of built together. Another issue was just continuing to be aware of the adopted land use plans. That was just something that was brought up a little bit, just continuing to be aware as a Commissioner of just the current land use planning. And then finally, under this, was reexamining the county's zoning rules and regulations to protect the natural rural environment, like we touched on at the beginning of this slide. People really love how this community feels to live in and driving around the natural beauty, so there's a lot of stress on making sure that as we grow, which growth is important, that we protect that feel and that rural aspect of Davie County, which makes it so special to live in. Moving next to quality of life and amenities, this is another one we heard, you know, some good feedback, that there are some good things being done by the county in this area. So, one, participants do enjoy the Parks and Recreation aspects and amenities that are offered. You know, we heard a lot, the Rich Park was a pretty good resource that people loved, you know, using that facility, and that was a popular one. Additionally, the Senior Center and the Public Library are resources for the community that were pretty well-received. Those are very popular. People love talking about them. So, these are things that are being done great by the community or by the county, and people, you know, would love to continue to see that. There were some things that people pointed out that, you know, bring up that quality of life, and one would be the need for investment into more programming activities and spaces for multiple populations, so that's mainly talking about youth and young adults and seniors, so maybe more programming and opportunities and activities at the Senior Center, or exploring opportunities for after-school programming for kids after the end of the school day. And additionally, there was a need for consistent high-speed internet access across the county. This was something pointed out that people noticed, you know, as we've been going through the pandemic and working from home, that, you know, having good access to high-speed internet is important, especially for education. If you're not, if, you know, for whatever reason, you're not able to be in school in person, and to have that access, you can still learn and keep up with your peers. And then finally, support for diversifying efforts to ensure all people can enjoy amenities was just something very important that also was brought up. Moving on next, education. I mean, like Julie mentioned, cognition and Ignite Davie were name-dropped heavily. This is probably the strongest area of feedback that we received. A ton of strong, positive feedback for education, both the K-12 level and the community college level. People really feel this is one of the great draws to Davie County is the education system that currently is in place. So, like I said, great K-12 programs in the county. It's a popular reason to move here. We had one person mention that what he was learning at in Michigan was two grades behind what he learned in Davie County when he moved here as a child or as a kid, and so he mentioned that was a great reason why he chooses to stay here. The DDCC is a great amenity for county residents. There was a tremendous amount of, you know, support behind the community college. There were some things that were brought up, and again, like Julie said, the biggest one was the teacher supplement currently is too low. It needs to be increased. There were fears and concerns about losing teachers to surrounding areas, and so people wanted to make sure we kept these high-quality teachers that make, you know, the K-12 education system one of the strengths of Davie County. Additionally, there was focus on vocational and technical training needs to be focused, investment for people, specifically to train people for jobs that are going to be emerging, that are going to be coming up as businesses are locating Davie County, making sure that the workforce is brought up to speed and is trained to take on these roles and these jobs that are going to be brought in. And finally, there was mentioned that there's a high need for more childcare facilities, so options for parents who work during the day and maybe don't have resources for children to be cared after, more opportunities for childcare, so that way they, you know, can go to work and, you know, contribute to the county and provide for their children. And then finally, in community awareness, this is the one we substituted for business operations. We received some mixed feedback on this. One, participants did appreciate the county's efforts to listen to the public. They really liked the fact that we were engaging directly with them and wanting to listen to them and hear what they had to say. We received so much thank-yous and tremendous feedback on all of this after each, you know, activity, whether it's community conversation or focus group, and so people really, really, you know, loved that aspect. Some other things to quickly point out, those that subscribe to the county newsletters or are familiar with the website are pretty well-informed, so people that choose to be well-informed or have the ability to go on the website or get these newsletters do tend to be well-informed, but the county should explore other methods of communicating with the public, whether that's more activity on social media. We heard mention of, you know, the texting system, the people that's somewhat in place that people enjoy. So, just exploring ways to communicate with the public. Other aspects, some communities do not feel well-connected or represented by the county government, and so leadership should be proactive in engaging with historically underrepresented groups. So, that's just doing the work of going out to different parts of the county or areas that maybe aren't as connected as, you know, people may be living in the, closer to the population centers and just, you know, making sure that their voices are being heard and that they're being connected with the countywide community. And then some final comments. Residents do not always know what level of government is responsible for various services, and we wanted to mention this just because we got a lot of comments about roads and the condition of roads, and we know that, you know, the county is responsible for that, but a lot of people thought they were or mentioned that and wanted to bring that up, and so that was just something that we've noticed going throughout the process, that people don't always know whether this is a state-level, a local-level, a county-level function that the government's providing. And then finally, we did get feedback that conducting a community survey has the potential to be a very good tool in gathering important feedback from citizens and in continuing these conversations and continuing to listen to what people want and need out of the county. And then I will turn it back over to Julie for some recommendations.
Thank you. So, just wrapping up, we see that you're on the right track, that your priorities are matching the majority of your citizen priorities, even though there's a few areas for increased emphasis. So, continue to prioritize public safety while also looking at increasing the emphasis on mental and physical health needs. Continue to focus on managed or planned growth in Davie County with strategic investments in infrastructure that will help the growth meet the needs of economic development and growing population while preserving that rural atmosphere. Continue focusing on your superior quality of life. People are happy here, but also reach out to the underserved populations, underserved areas. Use the high praise you got for cognition and Ignite Davie as a stimulus to maybe prioritize recruitment and retention of educators from infant through high school. And then finally, continue working to engage citizens in different ways through either future citizen surveys or more community meetings and conversations throughout the county. At the end of the focus groups, we did a survey of folks and just wanted to highlight a couple of things that felt like the sentiment of everyone. Did you feel you were able to meaningfully contribute to the conversation? And everyone answered definitely or somewhat. And then the county's committed to more community engagement, and 96% said, "We want more." A fraction said, "We want less." So, with that, we'd be happy to take any questions. So with that, we'd be happy to take any questions you have or entertain any feedback. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question. How did you determine the bullet points that you utilized here? And then, I guess, how did you determine your recommendations?
Yeah, so the bullet points that Mason was walking through, yeah. So when we did both the community conversation and the focus groups, we have almost everything transcribed in the conversation, some things didn't get written down. But we go through that and in the focus groups, we look for what people said and how frequently people said it. And also in the session, the in-person session, people prioritized at the end as a group what was most important to them. So we took what we heard and looked at how often it was said and whether or not it was a priority to come up with our bullet points and the recommendations.
And so then when we see the overall broad report, we'll see the demographics of what, when I say demographics, I mean the numbers of who said what. In other words, we're not just taking your word that these were the things that came out of that session that we can see. Maybe we would have some notes, maybe we would have some minutes of what was said in the sessions. And one thing I would be very interested to see, and I don't know if you know this or Cindy knows this, is the demographics of those groups. You know, their level, their employment, where they're employed, whether they're employed, whether they're in public school, whether they're home schooled, at private school, those kinds of things, so we can kind of get a feel for, you know, 103 people out of 43,000 people, you know, if we're getting a broad section of the community or if, you know, maybe there's some other voices that might need to be known.
Yeah, so let me try to answer your question. So first, there is a full report that I think got sent out in your agenda packet. And in that, you can see, I'm calling it a transcription, but rough transcription of who said what, how frequently it was said. We do not have counts of seven people said this, eight people said this. So we don't have that. If you were to do a survey, a robust citizen survey, you would be able to quantify those kind of answers, how many, what percentages of people said that.
And that's our next step, right? Would be a community survey?
I think that's what the staff would recommend. It would be up to you as to what you want to do. Surveys are very expensive, and it takes a lot of work, so that's something that we'll discuss in the process.
And then just to your question on demographics, we did not collect demographic data on the participants that attended either the in-person or the focus group, so we don't have that. We do generally have in the focus groups the five different types of people.
Thank you. Appreciate your work. Thank you.
I think it's important to know, I know that the meeting that I partially attended at the Senior Center, there was a pattern that was already established. So this was not like things that these people just threw out, there were guidelines. Is that part of the question you were kind of looking for?
Are you saying guided?
A lot of it, what I witnessed, a lot of it was kind of guided.
Okay.
Yes.
So if I could, so the question might be, what do you think about the health and safety in Davie County, very broad? And they would answer above expectations, meets expectations, below expectations. And then at their table groups, they were to discuss, if you said it was above or meets expectations, why did you say that? And they wrote that down on these big table templates. If you said below expectations, why did you say that? And then what are some ideas? So it was guided in that we went through the different categories. But we didn't say, do you like Ignite Davie? Do you think there should be more teacher supplements, things like that?
I had one question, if you don't mind. The, we use, in this county, we have the Davie County Enterprise, which a lot of people read from cover to cover. We also have the, we're broadcast on AdTell for people to see. And a lot of people call me or catch me on the job and comment on what they see on TV. We also have most of our information that needs to go to the public, that should go to the public, on our website. And I know in the past, we have done mailouts even on very important information. And we also, as a group, meet with the public at the Senior Center in January, and we've done this for several years, to receive input and answer questions. Was there any specific thing that people recommended that we do that we are not doing?
So I'll answer first with, people mentioned all the things. Some people said, I get my news from the newspaper. Some said, I get it from the county manager's blog. A lot of people referred to it as a blog, some people referred to it as an email. Some people said, there's bulletin boards downtown, I read things on the bulletin boards. A lot of people said they hear things on social media. So there was a mix of answers depending on who you were talking to. And with the exception, you know, the community leaders group, those people are in the know, and they said, oh, the Chamber of Commerce also has a good newsletter. And they were sharing information with each other about how to share it. The one thing that Mason mentioned that came up is, I think you have a reverse 911 text kind of system. And some people said, maybe you could use that for communicating information. I know, having worked in local government, you don't want to, you want people to pay attention when you do some reverse 911, you don't want it to be for, hey, there's a dance party at the Senior Center. So there wasn't a whole lot of ideas, but it was just, keep spreading the word, keep doing everything you're doing. You need to do a whole lot of different things because different people pay attention at different times. I guess the one other thing would be, there was an interest in more, at least, people said there's an interest in more in-person meetings around the county, so not just in Moxville, but go out to different parts of the county or go out to churches or maybe PTA meetings where people are already meeting. And that might be a way that you can have conversations with people that aren't typically engaged. Does that answer your question?
That does. And one other thing that I left out is the lunch network, because all of us live and work in the county, we're very active in the community. I know a lot of people come to me when I'm eating lunch or eating breakfast. Wanting information. Or just stopping at the store to fill up with gas, somebody comes out and asks questions. I did leave that off, and I apologize for that, because everybody up here is very proactive in the county.
I do remember a comment about, you know, having a sign that, a digital sign that can change the message to announce different kinds of events. And I think you don't have that currently.
I think they mentioned like the sign at Moxville, at the Moxville Park, and how they have some things on that that maybe we can join in with that and have something similar.
Yeah, so when people are driving by, they might get some information that way.
That's still only going to reach a small amount of people in the county, though.
Anybody have any more questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, next presentation will be the Capital Improvement Plan presentation. I'll ask Mr. Blackwelder, Brad Blackwelder, and Robin West to come up with Davenport.
Good evening. Tonight, we have Mitch from Davenport here. He's gonna, we're passing around some Capital Improvement Plan books that not only have our proposed capital improvement plan for 2022 to 2027. Tonight, we'll present this initially. We also plan to have at a future meeting, a public hearing on this, so you'll see this in a more summarized form at a future meeting. But for now, I'll turn it over to Mitch, and he'll go through the debt affordability as well as the county's financial position.
Thanks, Robin. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members, appreciate y'all having me back again. As Robin mentioned, this evening will be just informational, the introduction of the draft capital improvement program that staff has been working on, and our sort of annual analysis of that CIP and how that relates to your existing debt profile and the affordability analysis that you all have been working with and developing over the years. I've been given the two-minute warning already by Ed this evening, so I will try to keep it quick and hit the highlights.
Go as long as you need.
I will try to keep it quick and hit the highlights. A lot of the front part of this will be similar to what we covered back in March. But if I do go too quickly, or there's something else you want to stop and dive into, please stop me. I'd love to keep it conversational. If you have questions along the way, please feel free to jump in, Mr. Chair, if that's okay with you. And we'll just get started here. There are a few pages or tables that get a little small, so you've got the hard copies in front of you, which may or may not be helpful in reading the smaller font. But, so you know the layout of this presentation and what's coming, we're going to just very quickly hit on your existing credit ratings and introduce some peer comparatives, very similar to the things we covered back in March, but I think it's helpful to understand where you stand related to other highly rated counties when funding a capital improvement plan. We'll go through a quick overview of your existing tax-supported debt profile, what you have outstanding now, how that compares to your financial policies, and how you're set up to potentially consider funding the CIP within your debt affordability plan. And then we'll go through the CIP. I'll ask Robin and Brad to jump in and help me with the details of the projects themselves that you all are looking at. And then we'll talk about the potential funding sources that we've run in our model, revisit that debt capacity, and look at your cash flows, and how do your cash flows compare to the cost of that CIP? Okay, so just as a quick refresher on the county's credit ratings, you all are rated AA2 by Moody's Investor Service, so that is two notches or two steps away from the highest possible rating that you could have with Moody's. With S&amp;P, you're AA+, which is one notch away from the highest possible rating you could have with them. So you all have done a nice job of managing yourselves financially and otherwise over the years to achieve these level of credit ratings. You can see on the right-hand side of the page, I always think it's interesting, the other North Carolina counties that are in these rating categories. So around the state, out of the 100 counties, there's only 22 counties that have a better credit rating than you do at this point. So y'all are doing a very nice job in managing yourselves, you set yourselves up to consider funding capital through this capital improvement plan, and you have access to the capital markets at attractive interest rates, should you choose to do that. Let me just hit on the right side of this page. You'll see as we get into some of your key debt ratios, we will revisit these peer comparatives, and we'll show you how you stack up against these other counties, both nationally and within North Carolina, at your current rating level of the AA2. And then with Moody's, the two steps above you at AA1 and AAA. Okay, page six has your existing tax-supported debt profile. This is the, I think governmental general fund debt that you all have outstanding. It does not include the Water and Sewer Fund or the Water and Sewer Projects or debt that you would be taking on to fund those projects. This is purely focused on the governmental general fund side. And you currently have about 62.9 million of debt outstanding as of June 30 of 2021. About two-thirds of that is the high school GO bond that was done back in 2015. So about 40 million of this 62 is associated with the high school GO bond, the remaining 22, there are some, it's a mix between school and counting projects. On the right side of the page, you can see your principal and interest schedule on that $62 million of debt outstanding. The principal is all paid off by fiscal year 2040, so you're repaying all your debt within the next 20 years, less than 20 years. And then on the interest side, you, over that less than 20 years, you're repaying about 14.2 million of interest on that 62.9 million of principal outstanding. The far right column, and I am using my mouse to point if y'all are looking at the screen, the far right column is the first of the key debt ratios we're going to look at, and this is up, you do have a policy on this ratio. This is called the 10-year payout ratio. And it's the percentage of your debt outstanding that you are repaying over the first 10 years. So for you all, if 2022 is the year that we're looking at, you are repaying 85 of your, 85% of the principal that you have outstanding within those, within the first 10 years from fiscal year 2022. And you can see that's improving over time as you go out. If you don't issue any additional debt, that 10-year payout ratio percentage is improving over time. A little more on this ratio on the following page. The county does have a financial policy, a debt financial policy on this 10-year payout ratio, not below, to not go below 55%. So essentially, always repaying more than half of your debt within a 10-year period of time. And that's a very good level, solid financial policy that you all are well above that. And this is really getting at, if you're using debt as a tool to fund capital, are you paying it back in a responsible fashion, or are you deferring the payment of your principal to later years and basically kicking the can? And you all, at an 85% 10-year payout ratio, are repaying your debt very rapidly, and that's underscored on the right-hand side by these peer comparatives. The gold bar is you all at the 85% in fiscal '22. The light green bars are the Moody's-rated national counties, AAA, so the highest possible rating they have, AA1, which is the second highest rating, and then AA2, which is where you all are for all national counties. And then the dark green bars are specific to North Carolina, AAA, the same ratings, AAA, AA1, and then the bottom bar is AA2, that's the category you all are in. And you'll see, we've superimposed these blue lines over the North Carolina medians. That's the range within those categories. So we are looking at the medians here, the averages. The blue lines show you the range from low to high of where folks fall out on these specific ratios in North Carolina. So you all at 85% are above all of these medians in very good shape. The next key ratio on page eight is debt to assessed value. So debt outstanding as a percentage of your tax base. You all have a policy not to go above 2.5%. Very good policy, that's a common policy level that we see around the state. And you all are at less than half of that, at 1.2% debt to assessed value. So you're in good shape on this debt to assessed value policy, debt to assessed value ratio related to your policy. When we look at the peers on the right-hand side of the page, we're showing you the light green bars, but you can kind of discount those, because when you look at counties nationally, you'll lose some of the apples-to-apples comparison, states like South Carolina, Pennsylvania, other... States like South Carolina, Pennsylvania, others have independent school districts that fund schools. The counties are not responsible for funding the schools. So like we said, one issue of yours makes up two-thirds of your debt portfolio, and that's for high school. So you lose a little bit of comparability there, looking at this ratio nationally. But the dark green bars, um, I think are more relevant, the North Carolina medians. Um, and you all are, are right in line with the North Carolina AAA median, a little bit higher than the AA1, AA2 medians, but you look at those, the ranges in those blue bars and, and you're certainly not an outlier here on this ratio. You're within that range, although slightly above the median. Again, in good shape compared to your policy. We would say under this ratio, you do have debt capacity. It is reasonable to consider issuing additional debt, um, given where you are on this ratio, if you choose to do so. Finally, um, on page nine, debt service to expenditures. Um, this is a measure of your annual payments of principal and interest as a percentage of your overall governmental budget. You all have a policy not to exceed 15% on this ratio. Um, right now, in fiscal '22, um, without counting your lease payments on the Health and Human Services Sheriff facility, uh, you're at 13.2%. Goes up to just under 13.5% if you count those lease payments, but below the 15% policy. Uh, again, you look at the peer comps on the right-hand side of the page, the peer comparatives, um, slightly higher than those medians, uh, the dark green bars, the AA1 and AA2 medians, right in line with that AAA median, uh, but within the blue bars, within the bounds of the range of these different rating categories. Um, a little closer to your policy here, but there is some capacity within that policy to issue additional debt and certainly not an outlier compared to your peers, peer-rated counties. So, um, again, there is some capacity under this ratio to consider additional debt as part of funding the CIP, if you choose to do so. Okay? Um, the, the flip side of that, so that's kind of the capacity side within your policy. The flip side is the affordability, the cash flows. You all have done a really nice job of setting up a, a series of sources to repay your debt service and have been funding that on an annual basis. The question with affordability is, within those resources that you've set aside for debt service, do you, what sort of room do you have to take on additional debt or pay-as-you-go capital? It's all part of funding the CIP, both debt and pay-as-you-go capital. Um, how much room do you have within those sources to fund capital, whether cash-funded or debt-funded? And page 11 lays out for you, just at a high level, those revenue sources that you all have chosen to set aside over the years and budget for annually to fund capital projects. Um, hit this at a high level, I'll go through it quickly, but feel free to stop me. Um, when this plan was initially developed, uh, beginning in 2016, 6.3, or 5.36 cents was set aside to fund debt service and capital that was existing to the existing budget that was dedicated to debt service at that time. Um, an additional penny was added when the park GO bonds were issued a couple of years ago, in 2018. Second bullet is the 10.8 cents, um, which was tied to the high school debt service, the 2015 GO bond. There was a specific tax rate put in place related to that debt issuance. Um, the county is budgeting annually operating revenue to fund vehicles. Um, so you have an annual vehicle replacement program, um, and you fund that annually as part of your operating budget. There's a general fund appropriation, so coming from the general fund, just under $500,000 every year for pay-as-you-go capital funding. Uh, there are some cell phone tower rents that you've set aside. And then the final two bullets are, uh, memorandums of understanding or agreements you have with the schools to fund school-related projects that you all issued debt to fund. Those revenue sources do end when the debt associated with those projects is fully paid off. But, and that's what we've assumed in this analysis. To the extent there are other school projects that are issued in the future, perhaps those agreements could be revisited and/or extended. But for the time being, we, when the associated debt service on those projects is paid off, we stop those revenue sources. I know we spent a lot of time talking about this high school funding plan back in March. I won't walk through it this evening unless you'd like me to, I'm happy to do it. But I think the key takeaway on this page is, uh, we talked about as part of the '22 revow, um, there was some consideration about going ahead and reducing the high school, um, tax rate as part of that revow process. Um, chose to keep it where it was put in place initially, um, in 2022. And what that results in is being able to, um, end that tax rate earlier than what we were previously assuming. So at this point, um, holding that tax rate equal to 10.8 cents for as long as you need to, it could be reduced in fiscal year 2030 to 1.95 cents, and then it would go away in fiscal year 2031 completely. So it would end completely two years before originally scheduled and would be reduced significantly in that third year before originally scheduled. So these revenue sources are gonna flow through the affordability model tied to the 10.8 cents for that high school debt service, but you'll see in a moment, we're assuming it ends in 2031, earlier than the high school debt service is paid off. Okay? Page 13, this is where I warned you the numbers get kind of small. Uh, page 13 is this affordability analysis. And again, I know we spent a lot of time talking through this back in March, but just as a quick refresher, columns B through F are the debt service requirements. Right now, this is just your existing debt portfolio. So your existing debt and the, the HHS Sheriff's Department lease is included as debt service in this analysis. That's in column B. Column C is your existing vehicle-related debt service. Again, you all have this annual funding plan where you issue a five-year installment financing to fund vehicles, and that's a rolling program. So that, over time, is anticipated to maintain at roughly that $900,000 level as you continue with that vehicle funding program. Column D is where we'll layer in the new debt service tied to CIP funding. And column E is where we'll layer in the CIP pay-as-you-go capital funding. Those two columns will change depending upon how you choose to fund the CIP. That's really where that CIP funding is getting laid in. That all totals up in column F. Um, and then columns G through N are the revenues available, uh, to fund capital, pay-as-you-go capital, and debt service. Column G is the 6.3 cent property tax and the other general fund revenues. Um, you see that's growing over time. We're assuming a 1% growth rate in the tax base. So to the extent you grow more quickly than that, this column would, it would increase more rapidly. Uh, but the idea here is we are planning on, we're trying to capture natural growth, not growth from revows. Should you choose to go revenue-neutral during a revow period, but we've assumed significant growth during that revow period, we would be overestimating the revenues. So what we've tried to do is keep this conservative at a 1% growth and not, and not count on any revaluation growth. Column H is the 10.8 cents for the high school. And you can see we've got the gold box around where that high school debt, debt service is paying, and it's all paid off by 2032. And you can see the revenues are, are stopping short of 2032, consistent with the prior page that we talked about. Right now, column J is operating revenue for the vehicle debt service. That is tied directly to column C. And then column K is that Board of Education revenue. And you can see that declines in 2026 and is paid off completely by 2032, or is done completely in 2032. Those revenues are assumed not to continue at this point. Total all of those up in column N. And then column O, and this is a key column to look at here, column O is your annual surplus deficit. The, the dollars that you have available to fund additional debt service or capital projects, revenues over expenses. Now remember, we are collecting revenue on the high school side and setting it aside to end that tax rate earlier. So that's part of this surplus that you're seeing every year. And then there's two years out in 2031, in 2032, where you see that small deficit. That's where we've stopped the high school tax rate, but the debt services continue. So you, like the capacity side, you have some affordability to fund capital projects. The ultimate question is, how does that line up with your CIP and the projects that have been requested, um, and, and/or need to be funded as part of the CIP? So we're gonna flip to the CIP here, but let me just pause there. That's the baseline for the analysis. So happy to answer any questions or keep rolling.
Do I have any questions? Keep on going.
All right. Um, so here's where I might ask Brad and Robin to jump in as y'all have questions. But let me just set this up for you. Page 15 is the, the current draft of the CIP for fiscal '22 to '27. And this is funding seven major projects. Um, the first, uh, is the, uh, community college projects. Uh, this is part of the agreement you all have with the community college to, to fund projects at the college. $180,000, um, of this 3.18 million is for, um, specific projects, a roof and, um, fire panel, that's, I couldn't read my own writing, roof and fire panel. And the remainder of that is tied to the additional, I think it's the Health Sciences Building, um, that is being considered. Um, so that's what makes up the, the community college line item. Line two is, uh, Viper radio and radio replacements. Um, in fiscal year 2022, you see that's a larger number, that's dispatch, paging, and fire. And then 23 and beyond is all EMS and sheriff-related radio projects. Um, line three is the continue implementation of your space needs study. We've been working on that for several years now, and that continues. Um, in 2024, that, um, that project is tied to the courthouse. Um, that's the space needs implementation at the courthouse. And you all did receive the, uh, million dollars of state budget appropriation for courthouse-related projects. Um, so in 2024, that $200,000, we're assuming that would be paid from that state budget appropriation. Uh, line four is parking lot paving, um, you know, 23 through 25. And this is being done at, um, facilities like Ad, the Admin, the Brock, Senior Center, um, the Government Annex, the old hospital site, a number of parking lot, um, repaving projects make up this line item. Line five, I'm gonna come back to that one, skip down real quick. Line six, courthouse phase one. Um, so this is the interior and elevator phase of the courthouse project. That's getting funded out in '25 and '26. And again, here's where we're gonna use the remainder of that state budget appropriation is applied to this phase of the courthouse project. And then line seven is, uh, the community, uh, park, and that is, uh, community parks, that's funding HVACs for the gymnasium. So the, the line that I skipped, I'm gonna go back to that, cause, uh, you may have some questions, um, detention center. So this is the upcoming project that you all have been working on, under design. Um, we are anticipating that that could be ready for funding as early as July of 2022. Um, and this is, um, this is the first debt issuance that we've assumed in the current CIP. Uh, last year, the project cost estimate was 16.1 million. So you can see that's gone up. It's now $27.1 million on this draft CIP. You know, seeing a lot of these major cost escalations, um, due to the current construction environment. But that is, uh, all of these projects generally were on the CIP last year. This is the one major change from the CIP that we've talked about last year, um, is, is that cost increase in that detention center project. So in summary, we've got 39.1 million of projects, '22 through '27, that are being funded. Um, and we're going to assume that the detention center would be debt-funded. And then the courthouse phase one project, net of the state budget appropriation, is assumed to be debt-funded as well. So of the 39.1 million, about 30 million is debt-funded. So roughly 25% of your CIP is being funded from pay-as-you-go and other sources, which i- is, you know, for this type of CIP with a couple of major projects is, is a good level. Um, a lot of times, uh, we'll see policies that require, you know, 10% minimum pay-as-you-go funding over the time horizon. So certainly at 25% funding roughly a quarter with, um, annual pay-as-you-go funding or outside sources. So let me pause there. I wanted to set that up, but happy to have Brad and Robin jump in if you have specific questions on any of the projects.
Do you have any questions about anything?
Yeah, just given the unbelievable escalation in the detention center, the, um, uh, maybe, Cindy, I don't know, maybe the sheriff, uh, when, or maybe David, when do we have to do this per the jail system requirements?
Sheriff, you may, uh, be the best person to answer that question.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I can't tell you there's an exact date. This is what I can tell you. We already are not in compliance, so they could choose tomorrow to start dinging us. They could choose tomorrow to shut the jail down. I think where we're at right now, when we, when we talk to the state, they're aware we're planning, we've been working with architects, et cetera. So, um, we can continue that to work with them and get by. The second part of that is, at some point, I mean, we've already had two major lawsuits at the jail. That's gonna be another issue. The third part of that issue is the current building is, I can't buy parts for anything anymore. So sails are breaking, doors are breaking. This blew my mind. I think everybody's sitting, everybody in this room. But when you watch the news, every construction project you hear about, the cost has gone out the roof. So I, I couldn't believe what the Surrey County Jail was bid out for. So, I mean, all I can tell you is that what we've worked to design will suffice for the county probably for the next 50 to 60 years. And, uh, we did it to match what the state wants, uh, to meet the workflows and the classification levels and that type stuff. But we did it as, I mean, we cut a lot out of what we would like to have because it's not what you like to have, it's what you gotta have to function. That's, that's my answer. I mean, that's all I can say.
Are the damages that you're experiencing now that you can't repair affecting your capacity? Or you have, I mean...
They do. We have blocks that are shut down at times. Uh, it's, it's costing you huge amounts of money from resources of, you know, the maintenance crews spending times over there. Uh, I, I'll give you one example we've talked about, and I, and I just, this is just a rough example to give you an idea of what goes on. So when we had a kitchen, we were spending a dollar and five cents a day for a meal. I have 72 beds currently. And we're just, this is just supposition, okay? So 72 beds, if they're all full for an entire year, was costing me $82,782 to feed everybody. Currently, I'm paying $5.75 a meal because I don't have a kitchen. So using the same numbers, we're full 365 days, that's $453,000 a year it's costing me to feed people. So in our design, we've designed a kitchen that would accommodate being able to hold 200 people. 200 people. Now, we're not building 200 cells, but it's a whole lot cheaper to have the space for a kitchen that can do that than try to go back and add it on later. So those are, those are the kinds of costs you're incurring, or some of those types of costs. Now, again, I'm, that's my task is to design a jail that meets the needs for the county. You know, how we pay for it, that's, that's our partnership. The sheriff runs it. Y'all figure out how to pay for it, unfortunately.
And when the new kitchen is there, your trustees will be able to work in the kitchen?
We will use some trustee. We've had those discussions. What I, you know, what we did prior when we had a kitchen was we contracted with a company. And we fed other meals. I mean, there's, there's other things you might could do, and I don't think it's going to bring in a huge amount of income, but, so there's a lot of different things we're spending money on now that, over time, you're spending the money where you're spending it upfront to build a new facility and you'll save it on the back end. Now, that's, that's huge. I'm not, I mean, I'm with y'all. That's huge, the increases. But they're estimates. By the time we get to construction site, I mean, estimates may go down.
So commissioners, in regards to, you know, what the future holds, I mean, none of us have a crystal ball. Obviously, there are a lot of supply chain issues going on right now in regards to construction materials. Also, there are issues with labor as well. A question may come to mind in regards to Commissioner Renner's, you know, question. Would six months delay in this project help? Would 12 months, 24 months, what have you? You know, again, we, none of us have a crystal ball, but, you know, based on our discussions with our consultants, we feel like, you know, the issues that we see today are still going to be here in 12 months, 18 months, 24 months. And maybe even worse because you've got a lot of money flowing through LRP funds and other, other funding sources. And so there's going to be a lot of construction projects out there. So, you know, delaying this project may actually cost more money, may not save money, but certainly I don't have a crystal ball.
Is your architect here? Do you, and I'm not asking, I know that County Manager Bone is, I think he's with, but are you all looking at outlier years? And is there going to be, I think, I'm not putting words in Commissioner Renner's mouth, but if we were to delay a year, or do you see any outliers in terms of supply chain, building material costs that may stabilize or begin to phase down if we were to wait a year or so? Or do you think, as David has said, we're looking at this for two or three more years in terms of?
Jason, could you just introduce yourself as well?
Yeah, good. Good evening. I'm Jason Hopkins. I'm project manager of Mosley Architects and the project manager on this particular project. All of the cost estimators and contractors that I've talked to seem to believe that costs will probably level out within the next year or so, but not go back down. And most people that are thinking about buying a house right now are kind of looking at the same conundrum. Do you wait and see what's going to happen with the housing market? Or if you wait, what if it just keeps going up and then you're paying even more money? So the general consensus is that no, prices will not come back down. Like, like, like you said, we don't have a crystal ball, obviously, so that's, that's difficult to tell. Supply chain issues could sort out a little bit more, but I think the skilled labor shortage has been a looming problem before the pandemic. We were seeing this in 2017, 2018, building up. So that was already in the works.
Jason, could you relate the story that you told us about one jurisdiction that tried to value engineer a project and delay bidding?
That project is Hamblin County, which is in eastern Tennessee. So it's really not all that far from here. That project bid probably four or five months ago, and it bid way over the county's budget. So I think their budget was somewhere in the 60 million, early, like 65 million dollar range. It bid for about 80-some million dollars. So they stopped the process, rejected all the bids, and went into a long value engineering process. And we redrew the documents, put them back out to bid, and it bid even higher than it had originally. So that particular project bid at $461 per square foot just a few months ago. Now, that project is more than just detention center. It's jails and courts and admin spaces. Normally, detention center square footage is higher than both of the rest of those. So you would think the presence of courtrooms and admin spaces would drive that cost per square foot down, but in this case, it didn't. The Surrey County project that was mentioned, that bid over budget by about $5 million at $430 per square foot. That's not far at all from here, and I think that's probably your best indicator geographically. Unfortunately, we don't bid jails every week, so the data is, the data set is somewhat limited, but the trend is, it keeps going up. And this is probably the simplest type of detention facility to build, and you'll get the best cost per square foot on because you're not trying to renovate anything. You try to renovate part of a jail and add on to it, you're going to get up in the $5, $600 per square foot range just because no one wants to renovate a detention center. Phasing, it's complicated, security checks, it's a headache. So we see that, those square footage costs being even higher.
And our, our current square footage cost is roughly around the 430s. That's the estimate based on?
No, it's higher than that. We're thinking around, by the time it bids, potentially 450, 460 with cost escalation. It would be great if it did not bid for that. The only type of outlier things I've seen recently are kind of really freak occurrences. In March of 2020, lockdowns had just started, and I bid the Johnston County Detention Center. Budget was $48 million. First bid I opened was $36 million. 12 million under budget. I mean, sheriff was ecstatic, about fell out of the seat. I didn't care what the rest of the bid said. You know, that was amazing news. But not long, contractors were panicking, obviously. They thought all the work was going to dry up. But a couple of months later, they just started inching back up very rapidly, all the bid prices.
Any more questions?
Just to try to pick up on the silver lining that the sheriff shared, if we had some saved costs, we've not captured those mentioned this. So there is a revenue stream there that's untapped, that's not accounted for in here that would make the pain perhaps less. But again, that's to be determined.
Yes, sir. That's right. At this point, we have not factored in any operational cost or shared revenue sources in repaying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so let me walk you through sort of how this flows through, and then certainly happy to step aside and let, and continue other questions. But what we've done here again is, is we're funding the $39.1 million with roughly $30 million of new debt. It's 31.6 million of new debt. You can see the debt assumptions that we've included on page 16. For the jail, we're assuming a 20-year financing at a 5% interest rate. And for the courthouse, 15 years at a 4% interest rate. Both of those are higher than the current market. Flip side of construction costs or interest rates right now are still very attractive. Again, don't know how long that will hold for, but the interest rates are still very attractive. Today, if you were going out for a 20-year financing in the public markets, you're probably looking at closer to 2% to 2.5% than the 5%. So there, there is some conservatism at this point in time in our interest rate assumptions that if we're able to lock in a lower interest rate, that would help improve these things. But right now, we're assuming $31.6 million of new debt, which would result in total payback of 46.6 million. We're funding all of the general fund pay-as-you-go capital. And the other assumption that we have is for fiscal '27 and beyond, we've flatlined that pay-as-you-go capital amount at $750,000. So as we look at this, this analysis, this affordability analysis, remember, we're funding '22 through '27. After that, after that, it's only the $750,000 a year of pay-as-you-go capital that we're funding. When we look at our key debt ratios, your 10-year payout ratio still stays very strong, stays at over 70%. Debt to assessed value does increase over that 1.5% mark for about two years, but still in very good shape compared to your policy there. And then debt service to expenditures, that's that ratio where we, where we were tightest with our existing debt. You do go over that 15% for about a five-year period of time. That's consistent with what we were looking at with last year's CIP, about five years where we're out of compliance. A lot can factor into that. Expenditure budget grows, interest rates come in better. Those type of things could improve this ratio where maybe you're not out of compliance for as long, maybe you're not out of compliance at all. From our perspective, when presenting this particularly to the rating agencies, we've been through this a lot with clients. If you think about COVID and the impacts on all of us, folks like yourselves are working to keep budgets low and not pass that burden on or increase the burden to taxpayers. And so budgets stay low, not growing as quickly, and therefore, this ratio gets pressured. So this is not uncommon. This is not specific to Davie County. We're seeing this around the state. And we've had this conversation with rating agencies. And, and it's actually been a very positive conversation when we can go to them and say, we are projecting to be out of compliance with our policy, but the county board is aware of it, they monitor it on an annual basis like you do, and have made an exception. That actually ends up being a fairly positive conversation because what they most care about is that you all are informed, are tracking this, and are making your decisions, understanding what the potential results are, as opposed to going out and issuing the debt and then realizing when your audit comes out that you're out of compliance. It just shows that you all are involved and are doing the oversight of the county's debt board. So getting into the flip side of the affordability analysis, the cash flows, what does funding this CIP mean? I'm not going to walk through all the columns again. I'm just going to point you to a couple, a couple of columns. We've layered in columns D and E, funding the, funding of the CIP with both debt and pay-as-you-go capital. And what we see is column M, what's labeled other revenues, we've got red numbers in here. These are the dollars that you would be short. These are the dollars that you would have to come up with to cash flow the CIP based upon the current cost estimates and our assumptions related to the interest rates on the debt. And the impacts occur in fiscal years 2030 through 2033, and it's a total of about $8.8 million. So additional revenues needed to fund the CIP under these assumptions of $8.8 million. We've run a couple of cases just for perspective for you on different ways that would offset this $8.8 million. Page 19, if you waited until 2030, when you're, that first shortfall occurs, if you waited and, and raised the equivalent number of pennies on the tax rate, it would be about four pennies needed in fiscal year 2030 and an additional roughly two pennies in fiscal year 2031. After that, if you look at column R, you're back into a surplus scenario. You would have additional capacity and affordability to fund other projects if you came up with that equivalent of six pennies and kept it in place. Okay? If you chose not to wait, I don't want to wait until the last second. We're funding the project now in fiscal year '22, '23. Let's take care of what we need to right now. That would be the equivalent of 1.6 pennies of new revenue needed. Again, that would cover all of your shortfalls through 2032, and then after 2032, you would be back in a surplus mode. So under either of these scenarios, you've essentially, you've got, you're funding this CIP, you're funding 750,000 of additional projects on a pay-as-you-go basis, and that's all the capital you're funding at this point. And that would take you out through fiscal 2032. We did look at, we did look at, you're rolling off the tax rate associated with the high school debt. So I know certainly 10.8 cents is dedicated to the high school. Just for perspective, when you rolled that high school tax rate off, if you used some of that tax rate that was rolled off and used it to cover this shortfall, you would need to use some, some of those equivalent dollars in fiscal year 2030 and 2031. That would be the equivalent of 8.85 cents in fiscal '30 and 7.3 cents in fiscal year '31. Again, the high school tax rate was originally in place through 2032. We've shortened it. If you chose to, what we've called repurpose, but you get rid of the high school tax rate, your tax rate goes down. If you take some of those pennies and apply it to this project for two years, that's the equivalent number of pennies you would need, just for perspective. And then finally, on '22, we've calculated the maximum amount of the detention center financing that you could do and eliminate that $8.8 million shortfall that we found. And, and what we've done is based upon the 5% interest rate assumption, the project could be about $16.6 million without having to come up with additional revenue under these set of assumptions. Again, we have the caveat, we've got some conservative interest rates at this point. Hopefully, those stay in place, hopefully, interest rates stay strong through when you're ready to, to fund this project. But we do budget that on the conservative side. We've got a 1% growth rate in the tax base. To the extent that tax base grows more quickly, that could improve these results. But we thought that range of scenarios may be helpful perspective for you as you're thinking through it. The last thing that I would point out is, is the last page of this, and I kind of alluded to this when we were flipping through the affordabilities. Even if you come up with that $8.8 million to cover the shortfall, that plus $750,000 a year of capital after '27 is all you're funding through fiscal year, roughly fiscal year 2032. That does not factor in any other projects that are out there for the county that may be needed before '27 or in that period after fiscal year '27, '22. As part of the CIP development, there was a number of projects that were requested to be on the CIP that are not ultimately on the draft CIP that you're looking at. Those projects are listed on the left-hand side of this page. The net funding needed to fund all of those projects would be about $10.1 million. And then there's other projects out there that could be considered. The additional future phases of the courthouse, phase two and phase three of the park. There's some land purchase, and there's perhaps other school and community college projects. We always know as things evolve, those needs can pop up. So just want to make sure that we're clear, what we're funding through the CIP through '20, '27. We do have a shortfall that would need to be filled. And then what else is potentially out there in the future to be looking at? So I'll pause there. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know I went through that last piece pretty quickly, but I didn't want to get a yellow card from Mr. Vogler.
If you have any questions? There's a lot of information, but thank you.
One quick question. The, and this is in the CIP. The, we had an $11 million increase in the, what we think would be the estimated cost of the detention center, right? That, when was that previous estimate?
That previous estimate was done in the March, when we voted on the CIP in March.
So in March, since March, we've had an $11 million increase in the estimated cost of the detention center.
Yeah, so it was a couple of years old, so it was a 2018, 19. We had a call- We had a cost estimation then. But since then, they've started design. And you know, as bids, as he said, as bids come in, those adjustments, those estimates have been adjusted.
So the $11 million increase is basically over a three-year period, not a six?
Not a six-month period or eight-month period, however long it's been.
He just told us about 10% of the 10s.
Okay. Got it. Okay.
And what I wanted to point out about this page was, we knew that the detention center was the most, you know, the highest priority project. So we knew we had to include that. So the things that are in there are kind of fitting around the detention center, honestly. So there were lots of things that we couldn't fund that we can hopefully fund through our general fund capital, you know, recurring capital that we have there. And also, you know, there's potential there for a bit of American Rescue Plan funding for some of these projects. So I just wanted to point that out.
And now, in terms of the rating agencies, I know you talked about a couple of areas here, but we have an issue of fund balance, too. That's not going to impact how the rating agencies look at us if we begin to couple a couple of these factors in versus just one, if that makes sense to you.
And when you say an issue of fund balance, just you're talking about?
Above our policy.
Yes. Yes. So fund balance is a very important part of the credit rating process. It's, financial position makes about 30% of the rating process. They look at it two ways. They look at your actual fund balance as a percentage of your revenues. So what that percentage is of your actual fund balance currently. And then for Moody's, for example, they look at the five-year dollar change in your fund balance. So to the extent you're pulling down your fund balance, that can be a negative, is part of the rating process. And to the extent your actual percentage comes down, that's, you're not as strong as you once were. But you are in very good shape. And Ms. Jones, I'd say for your reading, we do have an appendix B and C. There's a lot of information on the rating process in there that I think may be interesting to you, including a look at Moody's scorecard results from 2020, which is when you did use a little bit of fund balance in 2020. And you can see where you shake out. You're still falling out in their AA2 rating category. But I think this will give you a lot of good perspective related to that question.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That scorecard is very well shown, and so I would encourage you to take a look at that scorecard.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you for all your work. All right. We'll keep on rolling here. We're going to move to some public hearings. Our first one's zoning map amendment. I'll ask Mr. Medew to come up, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That may be a tough act to follow there. Before you, you have zoning map amendment 2021-08. This is a request by George Hare to rezone a portion, a 5.24 acre portion of a 25.63 acre portion of property from general industrial to heavy industrial conditional district. The subject piece of property is located at the intersection of Production Lane and Commercial Way and is further described as Davie County Tax Map Parcel F532. If most of you know, that is off of Farmington Road, right there at where the Shell Station is and things like that. Just for your information. Included in your agenda package, you have a series of several maps, one being the zoning map. The first is showing the area in blue as being general industrial. You do see the manufactured home, mobile home park just to the north, as well as red areas which are zoned highway business. Also, just bring your attention to the highlighted red area. That is where the subject piece of property is actually being requested to be rezoned. Currently, right now, the subject piece is currently wooded and with no other use, with the exception of a communication tower, which is just to the southwest of the piece of property. The Davie County Future Land Use Map identifies this area as to be industrial. It is shown on the Growth Enhancement Strategy Map as a prime growth area. The property was originally zoned R20. It was requested to be rezoned to I2 in 1985. And then we did change the zoning in 2020 to reflect the new zoning classification for just general industrial. As I mentioned, this request is for a heavy industrial conditional district. This is a district that is established for industrial processing and related subgroups. Also, as I mentioned, this is a conditional district. The applicant has identified the use that he would like to have on the piece of property, which is a concrete processing and materials type use. The planning board did hear this at its October 26 meeting and voted by a unanimous vote of seven in favor and none opposed with these draft conditions, that the property be limited to the use of a concrete products plant, and that lighting shall consist of floodlights mounted on top of the silos and directed towards primary work areas, and additional lighting shall be limited to full cutoff light-type fixtures. Issues to consider, as I mentioned, this is a conditional use type zoning, so you can only consider the one use that is being proposed. Other things to consider is that the property is potential as an industrial development. The properties, if the rezoning is approved, then it still goes through our normal development-type process through a project review and things of that nature. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman, for any questions. I know the applicant representative is here, Mr. Luke Dickey with Stimwell Associates. But I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions?
Just for transparency purposes, did you have, you had community meetings, right?
No, it's not required to have community meetings.
Did you have any of the community come to the planning board meeting to speak against the project?
No, there was no one that came in opposition. But I do, and I'll let Mr. Dickey explain this, but they did further outreach than what we are typically required to do by ordinance and by statute. So I'll let him explain that.
Okay, thank you.
Good, very good. Mr. Dickey?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Luke Dickey with Stimwell Associates, 601 North Trade Street, Suite 200, Winston-Salem, 27101, representing Ed Hare and the George Hare Properties here, and also Chandler Concrete, who is looking at putting their concrete mix plant on this property. So I got a presentation that I'll run through briefly for you. So we did do a neighborhood outreach. We always do that before we go into any zoning cases because we want to know how the neighborhood feels about this. So this is a map of representing the extents of the properties that we had invited to that neighborhood outreach. Basically, on the bottom of the screen there is I-40 and Farmington Road interchange. And then we went all the way up to Putting Ridge Road. So it was a total of 145 property owners that we invited to the meeting. We held that as a drop-in session so they can come in between certain hours at the middle school, so very close proximity to them. We had only two that actually showed up to that meeting. One was from the veterinary clinic with the horse there, and then also just a neighbor that was next to him, just coming that had some questions and concerns, just to go through about typical things with traffic, things like that. After they had the presentation with them, they were supportive of the project. So they had no other questions at that point. This is a quick site plan of that. So this, again, this is only just over five acres. Farmington Road is off the site there up to the upper right where you see, and then you see the mobile home park there, back behind the site, existing manufacturing facilities there, down to the southeast of the site. And then SMEX grading excavation is located behind the site there. What we tried and intended to do here was to, basically, again, we are zoning from GI to HI for the concrete mix plant, and that's the only use that we are asking for. We have a 50-foot buffer located there, basically off of Production Lane. So this is the, if I can get my mouse to show up there. This is the access to SMEX grading and excavation. So we've proposed our property line off of that. And then we're trying to leave 50 feet of existing vegetation from there. Also, you can see the evergreen screen right now that is very dense along the mobile home park. So the screening is quite intense here. And then we tried to center the site then in the trees in the middle of the site. So access comes off of Commercial Way, and this is only contacting to then Farmington Road. So there's no new access points on Farmington Road. And then looking at the mix plant really in the center section right here. What you see here are the stockpile areas, so there's large concrete barriers that kind of hold the aggregates and the sand. And then all the other production facility is located right here. These are wash-down bays. And then, of course, we have stormwater management that handles any runoff from the site that goes into that, and then it'll discharge off the site from there. This is a real quick kind of a site section to kind of show roughly what the view would be from the mobile home park and residence, so you kind of get an idea. Here's the silos located here. We're showing a maximum height of kind of roughly 80 feet. These are located 210 feet to the property line of the mobile home park. This is the existing vegetative screen that they have there. This is Production Lane. And then we have the 50 feet of trying to maintain the existing buffer. And then to meet the minimum requirements for your buffer yard, we'd supplement and plant anything in there to help with additional screening. So really, anybody at this point right now, due to the existing screening on the site for the mobile home park, they really wouldn't see much as at all you can see from those sightlines. This is just an aerial of a recent plant, I believe. Remind me again where this one was located? Meban plant, that's right. So this is kind of, you see how it kind of lays out with the silos in the middle. These are the wash-down bays in the back. Here's the aggregates being contained, then, of course, the production facility. And this is kind of very similar to what that pond would be on the site. So it's really kind of is pretty compact, but you see how everything operates there. Main concern, of course, is always traffic, especially off of the Farmington Road interchange with the schools. Estimated that 95% of our traffic is going to obviously head south on Farmington Road because they want access to Interstate 40 to go basically east and west from that location. Anything that's going to head north is because there's a project up in that direction. Peak hours are between 6:00 to 9:00 a.m. in the morning with a total of about 6 to 8 vehicles per hour. So this equates to trucks leaving the site roughly, I'd said, 5 to 10 minutes, but it's really 7 and 1/2 to 10 minutes. So there's a pretty good gap between the trucks coming in and out of the site. So it's not like a constant flow during that hour time. Amount of traffic obviously will vary based on demand and timing of product delivery for projects. Material haulers, such as bringing in your sand, gravel, cement, these can be scheduled for off-peak hours coming in. So they bring those materials in, it's not during the peak hours then at that time. And obviously, we have the Vulcan Quarry for aggregate just to the north there, so that can be scheduled for them if they choose to use them. This will have 8 to 12 employees, so they'll come in at their shifts in the morning and leave. But so it's not a lot of high-traffic generation from an employee standpoint. Again, the site is currently zoned GI, which would allow for warehouse, distribution center, and industrial uses. And those obviously could generate a whole lot more traffic than what this one is proposing to do. And that's by right today. Lighting and noise is always a concern, especially from an industrial standpoint. So we've agreed to that condition that Andrea talked about. Again, no lighting will be directed onto adjacent residential property and meeting ordinance requirements. Plant operation noise levels will be the loudest right at the center location where the silos are. And of course, that will decrease as one moves out towards the property line. So the plant, again, is located 210 feet from the Dutchman Trail Community property line, and they have the intervening natural buffers that we will maintain there. So it's a result in a decrease in decibel levels, be around 60 to 65 decibels or less. And so a normal conversation we're having right now, even though I macked up, is about 60 decibels. So that's kind of what the sound that you'd hear kind of basically towards that property line. Health and environment is always a big concern, too. The plant will be Green Star certified by the National Ready Mixed Concrete Association, based on those standards there. The recent Meban plant won the top 2021 Environmental Excellence Awards for the eastern United States, all the eastern United States. Storm water will be managed. We'll have installed for sediment control and harvesting stormwater for processed water for recycling in the operations. Air quality, there's high standards that the plant has to meet, regulations of permits they have to get. They have dust collection systems that are integrated into the process, and then dust control measures are implemented during hot or dry times of the year to minimize dust. In other words, where we've got gravel, they'll wet it down so there's not a lot of dust that's produced from the traffic on the site. Again, economic benefits is a great segue from what the last presentation was in this case. We're representing about a $2.4 to $3 million investment, providing 8 to 12 jobs. It's going to generate roughly $18,672 exact dollars in property tax annually, based on that. Also, they generate between $39,000 to $52,000 kind of in county sales tax annually once they're at full operations. So it's going to take some time for them, you know, to get their presence known and then to operate at that point. Also, it's going to be a water user, so extend water to the site. That usually generates between $500 to $700 of water usage per month based on your typical operational needs. So that's just kind of a big, kind of broad overview of the overall project. Be happy to answer any questions. Also, Bob Chandler, Jamie Gomes with Chandler Concrete are also here to get and answer probably more specific questions in terms of the operation.
Anyone have any more specific questions?
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, this is a public hearing, so I'll turn it over to Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chair has announced this is the day and hour of the public hearing on proposed zoning map amendment application by George Hare to rezone a 5.24 acre portion of a 25.63 acre parcel of land from general industrial to heavy industrial conditional use or conditional district. Parcel is located at the intersection of Production Lane and Commercial Way and is a portion of Davie County Tax Map F532. There has been due public notice given pursuant to the requirements of Article 20 of the North Carolina General Statutes and also Chapter 153A of the North Carolina General Statutes, and also Chapter 155 of the Davie County Code of Ordinance by way of due publication notice in the public of a public hearing and the paper of general circulation in Davie County is required. Clerk to the Board has attached affidavits showing publication said paper a date at least 10 days prior to today's date. I would ask for anyone who wishes to comment at this public hearing, come forward to the podium, state your name for the board, and then comment on the proposal. Mr. Chairman, seeing no one coming forward to comment, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comment section of this public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter.
Good. Do we have any more of a discussion? Would anyone like to make some action?
Mr. Chairman, I motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion on the table in a second. Any other? All right. Go for the vote. All approve, in favor? Five votes. There you go. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to our next public hearing. Davie County Code of Ordinance's update, Chapter 30 Personnel Policies. I'll turn it over to Mr. Vogler.
Commissioners, currently, the Davie County Code of Ordinance requires certain officials to live within the county's jurisdiction. Those include the county manager, assistant county manager, finance director, and county attorney, as well as the tax administrator. What you have before you is a proposal to remove the requirements for residency for tax administrator. This item has been duly advertised, and we ask you to hold a public hearing to take action on this item.
Anyone have any questions there? Okay, Ed.
Chair has announced this is the day and hour of the public hearing on proposed modification of Section 30 Residential Requirements Davie County Code of Ordinance. There's been due notice given pursuant to the requirements of Article 20 of the Davie, and also Chapter 153 of the North Carolina Statutes, and also Davie County Code of Ordinance by way of due notification and publication of notice of the public hearing and newspaper of general circulation Davie County is required. Clerk to the Board has attached affidavits showing publication of said paper a date at least 10 days prior to today's date. I would ask for all who wish to comment at this public hearing to come forward to the podium, state your full name for the board, and then comment on the proposal. Mr. Chairman, seeing no one come forward to comment, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comment section of this public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take. wish to take with regards to this matter.
Does anybody have any more discussion? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve or disapprove?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve this change.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote, all in favor? Five vote. Thank you. Okay. I will move on to the consent agenda. Anyone have any concerns with consent agenda? I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion. I have a second. All right. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, could I, now that we've approved this, I'd like to just ask, and I would hope I would have the Board support that in this, in this consent agenda, we just passed a resolution, freedom against mask and vaccine mandates. I would like for a copy of this resolution, and I don't know what the normal protocol is of distribution of these resolutions. I know, I know counties, county clerks distribute them to, to other boards, but I would purposefully like for us, or intentionally like for us, to send copies of this resolution, though it would do no good to the Office of the President of the United States, to Governor Cooper's office, to Senator Burr and Senator Tillis, to Representative Hudson, who will, in the 10th District now, I think he needs to start hearing from us, Representative Bud, Representative Howard, Senator Kravik, and, and, and the head of each department in Davie County, including the Davie County Health Department, Health and Human Services.
We're good?
Thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good deal. We'll move on. Do we have any old business? Okay, seeing none, do we have any new business to take up?
Mr. Chairman, I got one thing I'd like to bring up. When we're, I know we just, in our consent agenda, we just adopted an amendment to our recs and parks grant policy, but I would like to, there's at least one recreation department or facility in this county that has not been able to get funding for the last couple of years since we went to our policy, the grant policy, and I respect the grant policy procedure. But the one I'm speaking at specifically is the Sheffield Recreation Center, Community Building, Community Center, and, you know, they've, I think, as far as what these community centers do, if you go up there and look at that one, and they all do a great job, but these folks in particular do an outstanding job, and the fact they haven't got any money over the past couple of years because they've, to their way of thinking, have been not able to participate in the process, and I don't necessarily agree with that, their conclusion that they weren't able to participate because there were some ways to participate. But that said, I would like to just consider getting them some money to maybe backfill some of their shortcomings. They were paying for stuff out of their pocket up there, and it's, I just got a problem with that, so I would like to throw that out for consideration.
Got a consideration on the table. We have any more discussion?
I would just like for us to investigate further into the other community centers and make sure that same thing hasn't been occurring there, and if it has, that we would also be willing to take care of them as well, and maybe possibly some consideration towards the Little League Football Association because I think they were not able to get some for some of those same reasons. So if we can just investigate that further and make sure we're taking care of everybody who was dropped through the cracks.
Did they apply?
Commissioner, my understanding is they did not apply because their understanding was they had to be a properly registered 501(c)(3), which they weren't. And now there are workarounds to that. You can partner with another 501(c)(3), but that was, they chose not to do that because of the complexities associated with that, at least that was their position. And again, I'm just about equity here, and that you go up there and it's a very well-maintained place, and it's just not right for these people to be doing that for community out of their pocket, so. And I would further my request and to quantify a number, and I would suggest we give them $3,500, too, and I would make that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion on the table for Sheffield Community Center to get $3,500.
I'll second that motion.
And I believe that motion is conditioned upon them using it for public, public purpose. Is that correct, Mr. Renninger?
Absolutely.
Yep. Okay.
I have a motion on the table and a second.
Hold, just, hold on just a second, just. Ms. Feeney had asked, I think, that we look further into other, I mean, how many, how many of these, how many community groups do we have that fit, kind of fit this same category?
More?
Lot of complexities here. So, so last year, as the policy was updated, allowed for a community recreation agency, community recreation agency, if they weren't an official 501(c)(3) to partner with an affiliate, as an affiliate to a 501(c)(3) to apply, because we had an issue with two organizations only, Sheffield Callahan and the situation with Grimes Parker Basketball Camp, which is now disbanded. Okay? We made those provisions available, contacted each and notified how they could go about the process of going to get their affiliates, and was their choice to apply or not. The way the policy is now, it is open season. It's no longer community recreation agencies, it's community agencies. So it opens it up to anybody and everybody. However, there are provisions within that. Just because you apply does not mean that your agency will be funded. There is a rubric that we use. For example, you will be, the first part of that rubric will be if you've completed the necessary requirements within the grant application, on top of if you are a 501(c)(3), then you'll have a score that's weighted differently than if you're an affiliate or if you're a community agency. Because the intent is for nonprofit agencies to have, to have a certain measure and standard that we know that they're legit 501(c)(3) that follow IRS guidelines of 501(c)(3) status. And then there's affiliates of nonprofits, and then there's agencies that aren't nonprofits, but they still have to go through public purposes in our North Carolina Constitution and North Carolina General Statutes for public purposes, for services, projects, or activities that the local government can participate in. And that's a key piece that even in some of the North Carolina Constitution Supreme Court cases can be touch and go, which is why another provision is added that once the staff, then the Recreation Advisory Board Subcommittee reviews these applications and determines, there's also a secondary piece to that where the county manager, the CFO, as well as the county attorney get involved to make sure that these projects that we're looking at awarded are for public purposes only. Does that answer your question?
So, Mr. Moore, again, Sheffield Community Center and then the Grimes Parker Basketball?
Only two.
Were the only two. And you said Grimes Parker Basketball is dissolved?
It is dissolved, and from the last intent I've heard it, they're, they're not going to move forward since COVID happened.
Did Sheffield apply?
No. We call, I called them when the cycle opened up last year, both Pat and Larry Dyson, and forwarded them, hey, we've updated our policy, here's a provision that you can use, that you can now apply if you link up with a church who is a nonprofit or any, any number of nonprofit organizations within this county to partner with, you can still apply and go through the processes everybody else has gone through, the same rubric. And they chose not to, which was disappointing because it is, hey, Sheffield Callahan's a beautiful recreation little center park piece, Pocket Park. They do a lot of great things out there, and hated that, but that part was out of, out of our hands.
Well, and I don't want to chase too many rabbits here, but it seems to me if, if, if it, if it is a legitimate community group, and my next question to Commissioner Renninger would be, what are the, what's the $3,500 for?
Well, based on what they have, their operational needs over the last couple of years, that's kind of an average, that actually their average is about double that, it's been about $3,500 a year for the last couple of years, so it's about $7,000. So I'm suggesting a number just to try to make them close to whole, but it's not making them totally whole for what they have spent in operational costs for the past two years.
And when I, I spoke to Mr. Dyson as well, and, and, you know, he said he did not apply last year in the go-around, and I know you talked to him, but he was pretty, fairly confused, I think, and overwhelmed because he had been turned down the previous year, and I think that's part of it.
Absolutely. IRS gave him a runaround quite a bit and how they lost their status when both Pat and Larry came aboard to take over Sheffield Callahan. I don't think that they were told that, hey, you got 501(c)(3) status, great. Well, the catch to that is you still have to file every year, and they weren't told that. And when they went to find their, to get their determination letter from the IRS, they said, well, you're not, you've lost your 501(c)(3) status, and then they were told, it's going to cost you this to get it back, or you're not going to be able to get this back, and, you know, to some folks, that can be quite confusing, especially dealing with, with Internal Revenue Service.
Oh, what other facilities are you think will be in this similar situation based on what you dealt with? I mean, communities, center community, I mean, what other?
Now, no one will be in this situation.
But were they before?
Not really. I know that when you talk about football league, I know the last two presidents were working on their 501(c)(3)
Yeah.
In which they have received now, and hopefully they'll maintain that. They've got a good core group that should maintain it, and, but there's no other facilities. I know Jericho Hardison Community Center, they use the affiliate. They're under the hospices of Habitat for Humanity and partner with that, so they, they utilize that. But we have been, we haven't been notified of anybody else. We have already made a site visit to Smith Grove, sort of about some of their plans because they're looking, they were looking to apply. Alan Smith Grove is under the hospice of the Fire Department, which have our 501(c)(3). Great. I was excited to hear that, so.
So like, would the Fork Civic Club qualify as a community center now? They're under the Fire Department as?
Well, the community center could. The ballpark is another, another tough one because they don't own the land and there's not a, an agreement. And when you're using tax dollars, public tax dollars, you, there has to be some way of justifying that is for public purposes for, in a lot of period of time. It's kind of like part, if you have to have, it has to be designated for parkland for so many years, so that way the, the public monies is, is for good interest.
Do your, do your grant, your grants, they don't fund operations, though, do they? They fund capital projects, right?
They fund three things. They have the potential to fund three things. Highest on the rubric is, is, is small capital. Second is activities. There is operational. However, it is, it is low on the totem pole. It is the lowest on the totem pole because when you, when you think about public monies being used, operational is non-visual. In other words, the public doesn't hardly ever see it when you're purchasing your insurance or, or contracting some things out with operational. It's things that people don't see. When you see, you see activities, you see capital that are happening. And one of the things we looked at when looking at redistribution of the grant and how it is processed is what are, what is the community seeing out there in these centers? What has been done? And this is a way to help them transition their thoughts, their boards mind, hey, let's look at your facilities, what, what are people going to? Are they aesthetically pleasing? Can they, can they work on their community centers, work on their parks? And this grant is a great way to, for them to do that.
And so the, the Sheffield Community Center, they are putting on, they, I mean, I'm still not clear on what we're funding here. There, are they, are they doing community, community events? I mean, I-
They do.
They do?
It would either be a, a community program, community service, or community activities. Those are the three areas that monies can be used for on that.
I get what he's using.
Certain services that they're providing to the community, or certain programs they're providing to the community, or certain events that they're providing to the community, or activities, those types of things.
And so they have programs that they, that they are funding that if they had had their 501(c)(3), they would have qualified through your grant process?
That, or use an affiliate as in this, this, this current cycle.
So they would have qualified?
They, they would have qualified if, they would have qualified if they had an affiliate.
Right. Okay, so it's just a technical issue?
Correct.
Okay. Because what, go ahead, I'm sorry, Ms. Feeney.
It's not for sure they would have received the funding, it's not for sure they would have been chosen.
Correct, correct, correct. I would say based upon last year's cycle, had they had applied, they would have had a pretty good chance.
Okay. Because the thing that concerns me now is we're, we're stepping outside protocol. You know, we're asking, we're asking other community groups to file through, to go through the process, and that, and in this, this instance, we're stepping outside the, the process.
And to a point we are, but to me, the issue is we've clarified the policy. This point forward, you apply, and that's the only way you're going to get money. I'm just trying, my issue is-
Catch them back up.
Catch them back up. That's it. So, and if, you know, 3,500 is not the number, I just throw that out as the opening bid, and that's my rationale for it. But if someone, you know, obviously, that's my motion, but we can talk about it.
And when I did talk to Mr. Dyson, he had stated that they were averaging $3,500-ish dollars a year in the two previous years before they stopped, like, so that's what, it's kind of what he said he was getting.
They made some good, they made some good capital, little capital projects over there in two previous cycles when they, when they had applied, of good things. And like I said, they do, they do get some good activities over there, and we partner with them, we've had our mobile rec unit over there, and the community's responsive. It's a great, rich community.
Okay. I'll second the motion.
But your points well taken on protocol. What Paul has done has been great. It just, prospectively, I want to make sure we're all eligible to participate, and I think just kind of-
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I guess one other question is where's the money coming from? Have you all had a discussion? It's first I've heard of it.
So we do have some public relation funds that have been utilized in the past on the Commissioner's budget, and Robin has identified that, that there is, there are funds available for this year. on the commissioner's budget, and Robin has identified that, that there is, there are funds available for this year. So we've got a budget amendment if you'd like to incorporate that into your motion.
Yes, I would attach the budget amendment to the motion.
So I have a motion with a budget amendment, and I have a second budget amendment. Okay.
But I would say this, and I'm going to stop chasing this rabbit now. I really feel like that with some of the things that we have done with Little League Baseball, certainly appropriate, many of the programs that we've worked with, I think we need to really work because they serve a lot of kids from Davie County is our Little League Football Program. Any way we can help those folks, we really never have stepped up and done that, and I know we charged them a pretty significant fee to utilize the fields because we have to maintain those fields, but I'd like for us, as we head into the next budget, to really kind of look at that, okay, and see how we can help those folks because they do, it's a very expensive program to run, and they serve a lot of kids and families, so.
I agree.
Have they already been in contact with you, Mr. Moore?
Absolutely. We worked on a, a, a solution as this next cycle opens up of how they can supplement that rental fee with the grant program because there's equipment that has to be bought every year, and that is expensive. So it's just prioritizing each booster every year to apply for different things and, and set that up.
Thank you.
Do you advise them on how to either go about becoming a 501(c)(3), whatever it was, or to affiliate with someone who does?
Yes, during, especially if, if we're either contacted personally or we have, actually during our cycle, we usually do a workshop every year, and we tell folks how they can go about starting that process if they're interested. Anybody that would call us that are interested about attaching themselves as an affiliate, we'll show them the process of going through that and how to get started through the 501(c)(3) process if they're interested.
And I think, Paul, isn't it correct that sometimes the football league was missing it because they were changing officers and like your deadline was, at a time they weren't, that board wasn't, may not be active, and I heard that before a couple of years ago, and that was, of course, a different board than they have now.
The board has changed quite often, but it's just, I seen, I seen the, I seen the greater good that they're doing for our community. That's why I made it a point to reach out and say, here's how you can do this. Please apply, please apply. That's what the, that's what these funds are for. And again, they serve a great public purpose.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion on the table with a budget amendment and a second on the table with a budget amendment. Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. Everybody in favor? Five oh. Thank you. All right, I'll move to county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, in regards to COVID-19, on November 26, the World Health Organization classified a new variant, Omicron, as a variant of concern. The CDC recommends that everyone five years and older protect themselves from COVID-19 by getting fully vaccinated. The CDC encourages a COVID-19 vaccine booster dose for those who are eligible. COVID-19 third doses and COVID boosters are available through Davie County Public Health. COVID-19 Pfizer vaccines are now available to children ages five to 11 as well. Division of Public Health continues to administer these vaccines to all age groups. We ask anyone interested to call the COVID line at 336-753-6779 to make an appointment. Davie County is still a red county on the CDC COVID-19 map. We have been a red county since July. Currently, we have 174 active cases in Davie County. Effective November 1st, individuals in Davie County who receive Medicaid or state-funded services for intellectual or developmental disabilities, mental health, or substance use disorders through Cardinal Innovations Healthcare were automatically enrolled with Partners Health Management. Davie County HHS reports the transition to partners is going extremely well. Davie County formed an LME MCO realignment committee to ensure a smooth transition, and the work of that committee has been completed. State budget was approved on November 18th. Davie County is set to receive a number of appropriations that will help our utilities, economic development, infrastructure, and general services. We offer our sincere thanks to Representative Julia Howard and Senator Joyce Kravik for their leadership in securing this funding. We continue to have drought conditions in Davie County and across the state. Currently, there are 22 counties in the severe drought category, 47 counties in moderate drought, and 17 abnormally dry counties. This does have implications for public utilities as well. And due to the increased fire risk, the North Carolina Forest Service has issued a statewide ban on all open burning, and has canceled all burning permit, permits statewide effective November 29th until further notice. Additionally, effective December 1st, the Davie County Fire Marshal issued a zero tolerance burn ban for Davie County. This is to include any previous issued burn permits from any agent, any fire pits used for recreation except for outdoor gas grills and gas heaters, any fires started more than 100 feet from a structure or dwelling, and any land clearing projects previously granted burning permissions. Davie County will have two pages of content in the next issue of Davie Life, as well as future issues. We look forward to utilizing this magazine to communicate with our citizens. We heard about this need to, to find new ways to communicate with our citizens tonight in the Fountain Works Report. So we look forward to trying that out and seeing how effective that is as another means of communicating with our citizens. Davie County Recreation Parks is once again providing a Christmas gift wrapping service. Drop-off pickup dates run from December 6th to the 20th, from 8:30 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. Small boxes and medium boxes can be wrapped for $2 and large boxes for $3. County facilities will be closed on December 23rd, 24th, and 27th for the Christmas holiday and December 31st for the New Year's holiday. And lastly, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we wish everyone a blessed Christmas and a wonderful New Year's holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next, we'll move to Commissioner's comments. I'll begin with ladies first. Commissioner Finney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first thing I would like to address, I really want us to think carefully before we proceed into any more events like the Fountain Works event. I personally think that we sunk a lot of money into an event that really did not display any information that we shouldn't already know. And for the most part, I hope that all of you knew the results of that survey. I think that most of the people that I encountered in the meeting that I was in were people that are already on board, they're already stakeholders, they're already people that we talked to a lot. I would like for us to challenge ourselves to reach out in the community more and try to make contact with those who we do not regularly make contact with and get their opinions and maybe have these meetings throughout the community, but it's a little disheartening to me, the amount of money, which is the equivalent to about five months of a beginning employee salary that we spent on that survey. And that's just a little hard for me to swallow when we, in my opinion, did not gain a lot of new information because it was information that we hear often. Just like the school information and the teacher information, we just heard all of that information from Mr. Wallace at the last meeting, so that's just something I would like for us to be careful about in the future. I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. Advanced Christmas Parade is this Saturday. Kula Me Christmas Parade is the following Saturday. There's lots of events going on in the county, lots of people active. And just thank you to everyone for all that you do.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
I think we've held you here long enough. I thank all of our staff that are here. Mr. Gaddy, welcome aboard. Glad to have you, and wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Mr. Wondix?
I think I would go along with everything that the previous two have said over here, and it's wonderful to see, look out and see a lot of people sitting out here and taking an interest in what goes on, or participating even, in our government, and, and thank you for the job that you do. I want to say Merry Christmas to everyone. Spend the time with your family, and Happy New Year as well. Because we won't see you before the New Year's air.
Mr. Edgar?
Thank you. I appreciate everyone coming out. Appreciate the job that you do. We got a great staff. We don't say that enough, I know. Mr. Gaddy, welcome. And with that, wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you.
I too would like to thank all of our staff for what they do. Welcome, Mr. Gaddy. I also would like to throw in a plug for everyone to be thinking about us working with the school system and getting them in line with some of their challenges that they presented to you. And I thought it was ironic that several of, of the comments were made throughout the, the community study that, that labeled the school system and how important the school system was. So, so I want to, I want to make sure that everybody remembers that coming forward. Happy holidays to everyone. And I appreciate it.
All right, with that, we'll go to a closed session. I guess I need to read this first, and then go to Mr. Bogler. Okay. So closed session to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee. Would anyone like to make that motion?
So moves.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? We are in closed session. All right, we're back in open session.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.